Come right forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gary Machieski. I'm a resident of Tate Lake. I've lived up here for a little over 24 years. And I'd like to speak about the EAW concerning the KGM application. Couple of things. I did send a letter to each one of you, and I'm sure you got the letter, but just to point out a couple of the important items. The thing to keep in mind is that there are a bunch of us that own property out at Tate Lake. About 131 adults, many children, representing 73 families. And then there are another five families that are part of the old resort out at Tate Lake. So it's, there are a lot of people in that area. One of our members, a doctor, did some research with the EPA. He found out that this application, which can also attach as an asphalt plant, indicates that benzene could be produced. Benzene can travel at dangerous levels, 1.8 miles. This facility would be between one and two miles from Tate Lake. Also arsenic is produced, and that travels about 2.17 miles. The third thing, formaldehyde is produced, and that is also a carcinogen. All three of them are carcinogens which affect, adversely affect, the health of the people that reside at Tate Lake or come to Tate Lake. Basically, there is also, unfortunately, there's a nice trout stream that runs by the property, and it's a registered trout stream. It's very close to where this gravel pit asphalt plant would be located. It produces a lot of silica, the gravel pit would, which can definitely adversely affect the trout stream. And then there's a question about the groundwater. How does that affect the groundwater? And finally, there is a, the person who donated this property, Billy Peterson or Matilda Peterson, they're, Billy and Cap Peterson established their first residency out of Tate Lake, and that old resort is still there. It's non-functioning, but it's still there. And she willed the property to a church, and the church sold it to KGM. And as part of that, her will, she indicated she would like that property to be a children's park so that it would allow children to explore nature and find out what nature is really like. So I'm sure she'd be rather distraught and upset if she knew that this was going to happen. So I would say I would, I would hope, and one other thing, and just as an aside, and it doesn't directly relate, but it could have a bearing. I'm sure you've all seen, and many times over, the problems with that train wreck in East Palestine, Ohio, all the toxic chemicals that cause problems for the health of people, for the effect on their property values, whatever. If you don't have this EAW to at least determine what the circumstances are, you've got KGM coming in with a facility that produces toxic chemicals. So I, it would be most unfortunate here in this beautiful Northwoods country, we have a small train wreck of our own as such. And I think that pretty much would take care of it.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your remarks. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Kim Wolf. I had the pleasure of being part of the Land Use Guide Plan Committee back in 2014. Took us about a year and a half of big discussions, and during that discussion, we all acknowledged that gravel pits are really important, but that they have a place. And we all decided that the Upper Caribou Trail would be left as a wild and recreational area to serve the community that way and keep all the industrial uses down near the highway. And I was really disappointed to see that KGM bought the land and that they're using it for a gravel pit because it is very environmentally sensitive. But more so, I'm disappointed that KGM owns a pit, you know, 20 miles, within 20 miles of this, and I don't see the need to extract the gravel from this site at this time. Maybe in the future, maybe the next land use guide plan can address whether we need gravel that much in the county to disturb these more pristine areas. So I'm thrilled that the, some folks at Gus Lake put together the citizens petition that's before you today. And I hope you see it as reasonable. We're not a lot of crazies trying to prohibit development. This is just an area that is very pristine, and I hope that you see it fit to agree with the environmental, the EAW that's before you as a starting point. Ultimately, to produce asphalt on this site is crazy to me, and it's very inconsistent with our guide plan. But just to go in and take, you know, conditional use, I'm in real estate, so I understand conditional uses, and I don't understand why, when they own 80 acres, they can apply for a conditional use for just six acres. There's this nice little esker, if you guys get a drive out there in the spring, I can see why it would be easy pickings, go in right next to the Mississippi Creek within 200 feet and take this section of gravel out. But why would they not have to apply for the permit for the entire 40 acres? I mean, can I, owning two acres, say, I just want a conditional use on my half acre piece? And maybe if, if I get that, I'll go for conditional use on the other pieces? I mean, there's a lot that I don't think is, I don't think KGM, KGM is being very forthright in their request for this permit. And the more I've thought about it, I, I have emailed KGM, I have not received a response from them. I just want to know what their ultimate plans are for this site. You know, this esker, I think, needs to be protected. But I want to know what their plans are. I know, just being local, that they've, are looking for new opportunities, and I just don't want this to become their hub of activity because I do believe the Upper Caribou is very unsafe for heavy traffic. We have the Loops and 99er Bike Race that traverses half this area. We have, as a county, agreed with the Land Use Guide Plan. We've created more recreational opportunities in this Upper Caribou Trail area, and it's a big bummer to imagine asphalt trucks and even heavy KGM trucks increased use of that area that is, is just, I just encourage you all to go look at it, and you'll understand why we're all so concerned about it, from a safety point, from an environmental point. But I know your time is valuable, so I'll stop rambling. I thank you very much for considering this, and I thank you for all your time to be commissioners for this county. Have a great day.
Thank you so much, Kim. And if you'd make sure to sign in, just so we have that for the record.
Great.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Are there any Commissioners that have received? Oh, we do have one other person. That's okay.
Good morning. My name is Shari Carlson, and I am from Gus Lake, right past Tate Lake. I'd like to start with echoing part of what Kim was saying, which is, what's going on up in that area? Like, it is, there are bikes, there are people everywhere in the summer. It is recreational. And I'm very worried about the, literally, like, the safety of people with trucks, even the gravel trucks. It's already, to be honest, a little dangerous with the logging trucks, but not going to challenge that here in this meeting. So if you're not familiar with that area, I just would ask you to go out there and check it out. It is pristine, and it is recreational, and there's something in the language around the conditional use permit has to be consistent with the use of the area. And despite the fact that there is a, apparently, a gravel pit there from before, the, the use of that area isn't for, you know, the processing of things, it is a recreational area. So I feel like the, the bullet around the consistency with the use is really important for you guys to consider, and consider that area, as Kim was saying, as meant for recreation, not for commerce or business. And then the other thing, and I'm certainly not an expert in this, I'm just, I'm just reading this, but the part about the esker and the water temperatures and the book, and the, the trout stream, that worried me, and I'm only taking it from what I read. Like I said, I have no expertise in this space at all. But in the event that this could harm a valuable waterway like that, I think it warrants further review to make sure that that, those assets are kept safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Jenny. I'm also from Gus Lake. And I would just echo what the last three people have said, but just also, I'm not really familiar with all of this, but I am, did read the materials and concerned just a little bit about the closeness to the creek. All of the other gravel pits apparently have to be at least 200 feet away. This one, according to the materials, said if they were 200 feet away, it wasn't even worth them doing it. So I would just, again, I really am hoping that you will do the environmental review just to, to take a look, see the damage that it can cause, and as Shadi was saying, to, to the esker, in which if you do take bits and pieces off of that, what will happen to the temperature of the groundwater? And that groundwater is incredibly important because it does allow water to pass through, even in drought situations, which can, even though it doesn't look like it with all of the snow that we're having. But we had, like, last summer, it was, it was really dry. So I just, again, just want to echo what everybody else is saying, and I won't go on and on, but, oh, the other piece that I was concerned about too is with the asphalt production, I was, it was written somewhere that they can keep applying for a permit, not an intermittent permit, but, not a conditional permit, but the one that they could just keep applying for. And I feel like that permit for the asphalt production, I, I don't understand how they can keep applying for it because they, they said that it's mobile, and they only need to use it for a certain time, so they can just keep applying for an asphalt permit. I just feel like, if we say no to the asphalt, we should just say no in general, you know? So, anyway, sorry, I'm not really versed in all of this, but, but that's, yeah, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Make sure to sign in so we have this for the record.
Right.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you. Other members of the public who would like to speak? Any other members of the public? If not, are there Commissioners that have received comments to read?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I do have one in regards to the situation that we're looking at today, and it goes like this. Commissioner Storley, we are sending this message to you for review and consideration, and please share this with your colleagues at the Commission. We have lived in Minnesota since 1962. We have been and are full-time residents of Cook County for over 25 years. We love Cook County. We love the outdoors and do all we can to protect our environment. We volunteer and support many local efforts. At your meeting on March 14th, 2023, please consider voting to send the EAW petition toward review, and we appreciate and your continued hard work for our wonderful county, and that is William and Mary Lou Heron.
Thank you so much. Any other Commissioners who have received public comment?
I received many comments, just not instructed to read here, so I'm sorry to share that.
Correct.
Me too.
I think we all did. Very good.
And I thank people for sharing. I mean, I don't know.
All right. Well, at this point, we'll close, close the public comment period, and we're going to move on quickly to our consent agenda. Is there any item a Commissioner would like to pull?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll move on now to item 10, which we move forward regarding land services. And we have Mr. Nelson and Ms. Maxwell coming forward to talk about the citizens petition requesting an environmental assessment worksheet. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning. Sorry. Yeah, so the item before you is the citizens petition for the environmental assessment worksheet for the KGM's proposed project out on the Caribou Trail. As you've heard already, the proposal is for a conditional use permit to excavate approximately six acres out of an esker, which is essentially a big mound of sand and gravel material that glaciers left behind. Part of the issues at hand is the proximity to the public waterway, Mississippi Creek, which is a designated trout stream and protected waterway. The proximity of the esker right to that waterway is within 200 feet, which is the area that we typically have as setbacks for these gravel pit activities. One thing I wanted to clarify with the asphalt plant is that it is a temporary portable plant, so KGM's proposing to bring it up just for specific projects. Just the economy's of scale, it doesn't really make sense for it to be a permanent asphalt plant. So it would be just for specific projects as needed. Yeah. Is there specific questions that you guys have that I can answer? There's so much information. Oh, go ahead, Tim.
I just wanted to add, Madam Chair and Commissioners, as per one of the comments in there are the questions about whether they could just keep reapplying for an asphalt permit or so. What that is, is that an interim, a conditional use permit, if, if it's granted, runs with the property, so it becomes a property right, so they can continue to use that, whereas an interim use permit, it's only good for a certain period of time and then expires, and then they can't do it again until they go through an entire full public process again. So that's why the, the real distinction between those processes are. Just wanted to get that.
Commissioner White.
And I think it would be helpful for the public if you would explain what an enviro, explain what an environmental assessment is and the differences.
Yep. So the state of Minnesota outlines certain thresholds for activities based off of the size of the activity and the type of activity. So this type of activity, aggregate resource extraction, the threshold is 20 acres excavated within a sensitive shoreline area. So one of the comments was wondering why this didn't trigger that automatically. It's because that excavated word in there. So this is only about a six acre project site itself. It's not that it's a 40 acre parcel. So we look at the project area that's mandatorily triggering that. So the next step is that if it's not a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet, then the, the public can petition for that. The environmental assessment worksheet is a scoping document, so it has about 22 categories of environmental type effects of a project. So there is going to be some assessment as to groundwater impacts, air quality impacts, wetland impacts, almost anything in the environmental realm. It's meant to kind of look at a project as a whole. And there's an archaeology assessment too in there. It's, it's a broad scoping document, so the KGM will provide that information, and then our office will assemble that and distribute it to all of the state agencies for their comments. It'll be publicly available for everybody to review. It typically takes, you know, the ambitious timeline, if everything was available right away, between two to three months, depending on how the timelines fall, because there's some, some required comment periods. And there's about two comment periods that take 30 days. So it is a timely process. Again, I think they'd have to wait until, like, May or June to get all that data, just because it's winter conditions right now. So once you would receive that document to review, with all the public comments and state agencies get a chance to, you know, provide their feedback, then it would go before you again, and you would make a declaration, whether you think that it's a sufficient amount of information to make a decision based off of, or if you think that it's not enough information, and the next step would be required, which is an environmental impact statement, which is a, a much more rigorous scoping document that I personally have not been involved with, because usually it's associated with, with much more intensive level of work. But we call the EAW, what you're looking for is a negative declaration. Basically, you're saying, no, we don't need more research. This is enough research to make a decision based off of.
And who, excuse me, who coordinates that review? Who's in charge of that?
Our office would. So we would do the distribution. We would make sure that we're meeting all the state requirements for that processing.
So you would reach out to the archaeologists or to all of those?
Oh, I'm, sorry. Yeah, no, I misinterpreted that. So KGM provides us the information. They're doing the research. They're doing the groundwater study. Yep, that's all on them.
Okay. Mr. Nelson.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner White, basically, we, our office, would do that in concert with the Environmental Quality Board. We, we keep in step with them through the entire process. It, the public notices that go out go through the EQB Monitor, which is a statewide document that publishes all of the information, and that's what sets the mandatory timeframes with which people are allowed to go ahead and, and submit any comments towards that. And we, essentially, we've done this at least a handful of times in the time that I've been here, in about the 25 years or so. We've done a couple of the EAWs. We've, we've made negative declarations for EAWs, and we've also done, which hadn't been brought up, an alternative review to an EIS, which is more targeted. We've done that twice, once in the Caribou Lake area and once in the Lower Popula River. But that is something that would be coming after the initial review. The EAW is the first step. That does all of the scoping, that brings all of the information to provide to you to be able to make that informed decision as to whether you need additional environmental review or not.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So when you said it will come back before us after you gather this, come back to this board or the Planning Commission?
The county board.
So Planning Commission's done now with this? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the, the, what happens is, as soon as the, an, an application of the citizen petition reaches the Environmental Quality Board, that suspends the state. The state has a mandatory timeframe in which the county has to be able to make decisions upon requests. It's called the 60-day rule. We can extend that to 120 days. But once an environmental review or other statewide type of review or agency is required, it suspends that timeframe, and it, it puts it into this next level of review. So the Planning Commission, what, the conditional use permit application is still active, it's still sitting there, but it's tabled, it's sitting on a bench, and it's just going to not go anywhere until after this board has the opportunity to review all of that information that needs to come in through the EAW and make a determination whether additional environmental review is, is needed or not. If more information is needed and the next step is taken, that conditional use permit application still just sits there until this board is satisfied with the information that it has, and then it would, once this board has made the determination that it has sufficient information to take that information, send it back to the Planning Commission for even further public hearing review.
Thank you. That's what I just wanted to clarify. I understood the process.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
I'm just wondering, how many, Nivea, have you done of these EAWs before?
I think I've processed four in my career so far. They've ranged from trout stream realignments to recreational trails. I haven't done one for a gravel pit activity yet.
Okay. Other questions that Commissioners have? Commissioner Storley.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand if K, KGM is going to initiate the study? Is that what you said? KGM will start at the process? And then what guidelines do they have? How do they know what is there environmentally, or do they work with somebody?
Yeah, so I did include in your packets the template for the EAW form, so that, that is kind of the, the recipe card, if you will, of the information that they're directed to provide. So they'll need to probably hire a consultant to go out and collect that, that information. We'll have, it's our job as the responsible government unit to determine whether that's sufficient or not. So there is some requirement on us to make that determination, is whether or not to say, that's not quite enough groundwater information, we need, we need more. So there is something to that effect. I don't know if you have more to add on that?
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioner Storley, basically, in a nutshell, what generally happens with EAWs is that, yes, the proposer of the project, of the project does then initiate and have to fulfill the requirements of the EAW. They retain an environmental consulting firm that basically does all of the work for them. They get all of the information. They, they get it all prepared and put into a report. They submit it to us, which then goes into the EQB Monitor and everything. We have a fee that we charge to the proposer for an EAW that allows us the ability to retain a third-party environmental consultant to review the information that they provide, because we don't necessarily have the engineering specs and all of that within the office to be able to make those determinations and to review all that information. So we basically hand that out and have that reviewed by a third-party consulting firm, and then they would report to us on those findings as well, as well as any professional engineers that we may have in the community or in the, in the area that would want to comment on any particular items.
Thank you. I think we needed to have the steps in terms of how this all works.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, I'd like to grant the citizens petition requesting an environmental assessment worksheet for the proposed conditional use permit requested by KGM Contractors Incorporated for a gravel pit and intermittent operation of a temporary asphalt plant due to the close proximity to the designated trout stream, the unknown groundwater connection between Mississippi Creek and the esker, and the potential project impairments to Mississippi Creek.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Well spoken. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Wyatt. So we have a motion, we have support. Any further comments or remarks? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This seems really easy. This, I mean, we just want to do due diligence here, and it makes a lot of sense if there's any concerns or significant concerns from, from the community where a project's happening that we, we look into it and see what's what, and then we'll have a better understanding and foothold to make further decisions. So just makes a whole lot of sense right now. This is the easy part, and it sounds like it'll be a very long and maybe not as easy process, but I'm hoping with, with your assistance, it will be smooth and easy.
Absolutely.
And thank you all for, for comments, and please stay involved and keep them coming.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, I just want to also say, I really do appreciate everybody who contacted me. I have been learning about gravel pits and EAWs the last week like crazy. So I do appreciate all the information because, you know, when I saw the Planning Commission packet, I did think, oh, it's, there's something missing here, and I don't know what it is. So I do think, thank you for bringing this forward and recommending this to us as a board, and we'll gather information to make our next decision. I've been learning about gravel pits too.
I also just want to make a remark. Sitting on soil and water and Lake Superior North, one watershed, one plan, I know that it's much better to look at things in advance, to anticipate what might occur, to look at the science. It's very expensive and very difficult to fix something. I like the preventative piece, and I think this is the way that our board feels, that it's really important to take a look at this and, and do the EAW.
Further remarks?
Yeah, there's just one other phrase that caught my attention from Director Nelson. He said, "next level," and that is my middle name, so I thought this would have worked.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion, we have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Mr. Nelson?
Madam Chair, thank you very, very much, and I understood that you had just moved this one particular item up to this agenda thing. We do actually have one smaller other item. We could go- We could go and then come back again in another hour and a half or however long it takes. I understand that there is a public hearing that starts at nine o'clock. I don't know how, I just leave it up to the board as to how you want to handle that. It's a short, actually, agenda item.
I think we can move ahead and do your agenda item, and then we'll move to the public hearing.
Thank you so much. So, this applicant, Jamin Boyson, has been requesting a rezon of his property. Due to our Planning Commission's inability to hold a meeting, he's been on hold for quite a while. So, we did hold the space for public comment at our last meeting last week. Nobody's ever commented on this request, even though we've publicly noticed it about three times now for rescheduled meetings. So, it has not been contentious. Basically, it's a rezon from general commercial to single-family residential for his property. This is a more fitting zoning district for his current use as a residential property, and so it would bring that use into conformity. The single-family residential zone district is a bit more restrictive in what uses are permitted. So, essentially, you're making this zoning district a bit more restrictive in what the permissible uses are than what the general commercial would be. It's immediately adjacent to the Gitchami State Trail, which is more compatible with residential uses as well. So, it does seem like a pretty good fit. There's no formal recommendation from the Planning Commission on this, which is atypical than how I typically present things to you because we didn't have that quorum. So, it's more so, here are the facts, but as a staff member, I would say this does feel like a very fitting rezon request.
And I can say, from sitting in on the Planning Commission and reading all the materials, and over several months, I'm looking at this particular property, it seems very filled with common sense that we would make this change. Other comments or remarks? I know it's in your district, Commissioner Storley. All right, if none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the resolution of the zone change from general commercial to single-family residential at 100 Temperance Road.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Storley. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break to let people leave the room if they need to do so.
Twenty-five years. Twenty-five.
We're all getting more mature. We're all just mature.
Yeah, we started here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And back to the.
Well, you've been doing a day going good job, too.
Appreciate it, man. I mean, I see, you know, I think I'm a replacement, actually.
Are you, are you kind of zipping into retirement? Or kind of sliding?
The problem with my, my family, the genetics of the men in our family, we don't live long enough.
Oh, that's not good.
You're way too young to be retiring.
I don't know about that.
Hey, no, no, I disagree with them. The younger you are, the better off you are. I agree, younger you are. Do it, do it.
Well, I suppose I've got to go to the bathroom.
Oh, yes. But, but I'm.
It's early for my break.
But I'm not going to because I didn't, my tea's sitting at home. So, I will probably need one later, and so I'll make the break.
You made it to the horse.
I've got three minutes.
Now, our work really begins.
Give him a two-minute warning.
He needs a lot. He needs it all, come on.
I know. That's why I wanted to do that.
I know, I'm terrible. We even had coffee for you.
His sweater matches the chairs.
I noticed that.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Oh, really? How come?
It's down.
My golly, you're friends with her.
It's easy to forget.
Don't they have an independence?
We were going to come, but we got a bunch of beer and all that. So, I was very glad, oh, I wanted to do that.
Anyways, I think he's fault for that maybe three times. And then I start to feel guilty, you know? Yeah, right. But it was, they always said it in Anderson goodbye because it just.
I wanted to thank you for passing that motion.
Oh, sure.
That was very, very important.
Yes, oh, yeah.
We appreciate that very much.
Well, my pleasure, yeah. We just want to do good for you guys, so.
Been up here 25 years, my golly.
Oh, yeah.
We've got to keep going.
Yeah, please do.
Keep everything going the right way. Keep it going in the right way. Watch out for this guy.
Yeah. You've got his number.
Bill's my neighbor up the road.
Yeah, wonderful. Trail up there, that wonderful trail. We've got to keep it.
Yes, we will.
Well, we'll never put gravel on that road again, though.
You never, what'd you say? Oh, there won't be any. Yeah, that was recor, what?
We did it in five minutes. I'd like to welcome everyone back to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. We had a short break following item 10, and now we are here for our public hearing, and we appreciate those of you who waited patiently. We're running about 10 minutes behind this morning, but thank you. So, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for the Caribou Lake Surface Water Ordinance. And are there any members of the public that would like to?
Madam Chair, if I could, if I could, what happened to our video? I would just lift out for a minute. Okay, so, I would just like to start by, by saying that we did have a hearing on February 14th. After that, I was putting together the documentation to send to the Department of Natural Resources and realized that the meeting or the hearing notice had not been published, as is required by statute. That is entirely on me. I just want to make clear, and I apologize for that. And so, the reason that we're having this hearing again today is to, to make sure that we are following all statutory processes and make sure this is done in the right way. So, I just want to remind the board that we have received voluminous information from the property owners around Caribou Lake, and I want to thank them again for all the work they've done to put that information together for, for the board. There are a number of impacts described in, in their documentation related to impacts on water quality resulting from wake surfing, also impacts to wildlife habitat, and then also personal safety considerations for other users of the lake. And so, and I'm sure if folks are giving comment this morning, you'll hear more about that, but I just wanted to remind the board that there are a number of issues, a number of concerns related to having that kind of activity on Caribou Lake. The other thing is just the size of the lake, which is, it's not a large lake, and it's relatively shallow, and so those, those impacts that I just mentioned are kind of amplified because of the small size. So, I just wanted to give that introduction, and again, thanks to the folks who are here this morning to give comment, and I apologize again for, for dropping the ball on the public notice. Thanks.
So, I see a number of people sitting out there. Are there members of the public that would like to address the county board?
Hello, my name is Sharon Hexen-Platzer, and I'm here for a different reason today. I am here to, to support this move, and one thing that, Madam Chair, you said is that we want to do prevention rather than try to fix issues afterwards, whether it is environmental issues or safety issues. It's really hard to take back or give back a life if a wakeboard emptied someone into the water and they had some problems. So, I really appreciate that you're understanding that and moving forward with the notice to the DNR. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will sign in, too.
All right. And are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Julie Biddinger. I live on Caribou Lake year-round, and thanks for catching that, James. It would have been a shame to send it all in and then have to go backwards, so it's a good thing you caught it. Again, we're just here, it's real limited. What we want to do is prevent the activity of wake surfing, not any other kind of activity on the lake, just because, like James said, it's, it's so detrimental to the environment. The bottom of the lake, a shallow lake, shores that are close together, it's a strange configuration of the lake, and we do have a, 75% of the people on the property owners around the lakeshore did sign our petition, and we really didn't have many people. One person thought it was more restrictive, thought it was just for skiing and wakeboarding, and we just explained to him what was going on. It was a real narrow definition of wake surfing. So, again, thank you for letting us be here, and again, I want to thank Fred Morris for putting together that, that booklet that he prepared for you with all the research and study, and I think that, that speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Tom Ryder. I think this has been well summarized, and Administrator Yorkey did a great job of summarizing it. I just want to point out, remind everybody how narrow this request is. This is about wake surfing, which is a very, very, you know, limited activity. It's not about water skiing. It's not about wakeboarding. It's not about tubing. All of those things are fine. It's just about this very limited activity of wake surfing, which is quite unusual. So, I just want to be clear on that point, and if you have any questions, we're glad to answer them. I don't want to extend this unnecessarily. We've already done this once, and you have a lot of materials in front of you, so we're open to questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or remarks among board members? Hearing our seeing none, is there a motion? To submit the Caribou Lake Surface Water Ordinance to the Minnesota DNR Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve submission of the Caribou Lake Surface Water Ordinance to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for approval.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Oh, just one question, and sorry if you said this, Administrator Yorkey, but are all of our past recordings and whatnot, even though they're not part of the legal public hearing, can they be included in this hearing?
My understanding is no, but the, but the written documentation, all the research that was provided will be included in the public record.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good clarification. Thank you for that.
Well, on that note, I would just like to thank the public again for showing up and speaking because of that.
Absolutely. All right, we have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on from our public hearing to a proclamation. And as the board and members of the public know, Cook County boasts the darkest night skies in Minnesota and the entire eastern United States. And three years ago, the Boundary Waters was designated as an international dark sky sanctuary, and we know lighting is important. It's a consideration the Planning Commission makes when they are looking at different items. And so, today, we are here to declare a proclamation recognizing April 15th to 22nd of 2023 as International Dark Sky Week. Whereas the beauty and wonder of a natural night sky is a shared heritage of all humankind and inherent to the character and allure of the state of Minnesota, and experiencing starry skies can encourage interest in science, nature, and art, especially among young people. And whereas Minnesota is home to some of the last remaining pristine dark skies in the United States east of the Mississippi River, which preserves the cultural connection to the night sky for all residents who proudly call Cook County and Minnesota home. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established negative economic, environmental, safety, and health consequences, while dark skies have been scientifically linked to positive health and environmental effects, and 99% of Americans, including many residents of Cook County, live under light pollution. And whereas light pollution results in a waste of $3 billion per year in the United States and contributes to diminished national energy security while reducing light pollution could save Cook County residents, corporations, and governments thousands of dollars per year. And whereas Minnesota is home to Voyagers National Park, recently designated as an international dark sky park, and the Boundary Waters Canoe Area recently designated as the largest international dark sky sanctuary in the entire world, and which attracts thousands of visitors each year to enjoy the dark skies they offer, bringing economic benefit to Cook County and northern Minnesota. And whereas Cook County is located in a major migratory flyway in which hundreds of species of birds depend on darkness for safe migration, and Minnesota is home to hundreds of species of nocturnal animals and insects that depend on darkness for survival. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Cook County, Minnesota, do hereby declare April 15th through 22nd, 2023, as International Dark Sky Week. And in Cook County, Minnesota, we ask each resident to join us not only in observing and reflecting upon this important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark sky resources.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt that proclamation.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Storley. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Keport, some information from emergency management.
Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners, community members. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about our ARMOUR radio system, and ARMOUR is an acronym for Allied Radio Metrics for Emergency Response. If I could give you just a brief history about the, about the ARMOUR system is way back in the early 2000s, the state of Minnesota realized that their UFP and VHF radio systems were being outdated and failing, so they decided to switch to this ARMOUR system, which is an 800 megahertz, more of a digital, radio system. So, they started out with MINDAR and State Patrol using them. They realized what a great system it was, and it, and it spread down to all first responders, police departments, and such across the state of Minnesota. So, it's a statewide radio system owned by, by the state of Minnesota and governed by the state of Minnesota. These were introduced to Cook County back in 2010, 2011. We got a grant through a fire, through the fire chiefs to purchase a large number of radios, so every first responder in the, in the county each received a grant-funded radio. Now, that was 10-plus years ago, and these ra- of visitors each year to enjoy the dark skies they offer, bringing economic benefit to Cook County and northern Minnesota. And whereas Cook County is located in a major migratory flyway in which hundreds of species of birds depend on darkness for safe migration, and Minnesota is home to hundreds of species of nocturnal animals and insects that depend on darkness for survival. Now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Cook County, Minnesota, do hereby declare April 15th through 22nd, 2023, as International Dark Sky Week. And in Cook County, Minnesota, we ask each resident to join us not only in observing and reflecting upon this important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark sky resources.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt that proclamation.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mills, is there support?
Support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Storley. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Keport. Some information from emergency management.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, community members. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about our ARMOUR radio system. And ARMOUR is an acronym for Allied Radio Metrics for Emergency Response. If I could give you just a brief history about the ARMOUR system is way back in the early 2000s, the state of Minnesota realized that their U F V and V H F radio systems were being outdated and failing, so they decided to switch to this ARMOUR system, which is an 800 megahertz, more of a digital radio system. So they started out with MINDAR and State Patrol using them. They realized what a great system it was, and it spread down to all first responders, police departments, and such across the state of Minnesota. So it's a statewide radio system owned by the state of Minnesota and governed by the state of Minnesota. These were introduced to Cook County back in 2010, 2011. We got a grant through the fire chiefs to purchase a large number of radios. So every first responder in the county each received a grant-funded radio. Now, that was 10-plus years ago, and these radios, again, are being outdated. Most of them are the Motorola brand. Motorola no longer supports these radios, meaning they won't repair them, there's not parts made for them. So we're looking to eventually replace the radios that we have in Cook County. Some departments have already, the sheriff's office, for instance, already upgraded their radios. So what I'm here today, I would also say that it's not only first responders that use these radios in our county, it's the electric co-op, the highway department, Forest Service uses them a bit, Border Patrol, just about any agency you can think of. Our school buses all have them, our schools have them. It's an important piece of communication for our county. So I'm here today to ask for support. I belong, as an emergency manager, I belong to the Association of Minnesota Emergency Managers. It's a very large association, large enough where the association hires a legislative lobbyist. So we have a lobbyist working for us promoting these bills to get funding to replace radios in the state of Minnesota. Graham Portage also has a tribal lobbyist, and the tribal lobbyist is also working with us to get support for these radios. As you know, Graham Portage uses these radios, too. There's over 650 radios currently being used in Cook County. So it's a large amount of radios, and like everything nowadays, the price of everything is going up. Jay Decou, our radio analyst, is working on possible replacements, not necessarily the Motorola brand, other brands, but it's just a matter of getting funding to fund these. So in your packet, you did see a resolution from the county supporting this initiative, and also a letter to Senator House trial. I would also, it wasn't included in your packet, but I would also include a letter to Representative Scraba also, to get his support for this bill. That's my ask today.
Are there any questions for Mr. Keport? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah. Commissioner Storley and I were on a meeting yesterday, and this item came up in discussion at the state level, AMC. It's very unlikely you're going to get your ask. And that was what they were telling us. So, which made me think, how many of these 600 radios is Cook County here, responsible for? I know, so sheriffs, they have a line item in their budget for replacement schedule. Do we have that across all departments?
No, no, because most of these radios are, not most, a lot of these radios are used by volunteer fire departments. So what happened after we purchased these radios with grant funding, they went to all, you know, all nine fire departments and other, the ambulance service and other first responders. At some point, they were made responsible for each agency, not the county.
So, okay, so we're doing this kind of on behalf of those organizations?
That's what happened in the past, yes. When we got grant funding before, one fire department, Gunflint, was the fiscal agent, but the county did all the work. We did all the programming, and of course, Jay is our radio administrator. So it's a big undertaking, because we literally have to put hands on every one of them, brand-new radios, and reprogram them and disable the old ones or whatever. It's a lot of work, but...
And it sounded like at the AMC legislative meeting, we had, this is a thing in all 87 counties, so...
It is.
AMC is working on it, but they said, yeah, the ask probably isn't going to be met to meet the needs. So I just wondered what we're going to do if we don't get this.
Well, I guess at that point, we would have to look into possibly other grant funding or something. I think other departments are gradually upgrading their radios also, but it's the first responder groups, the volunteer fire departments, that don't have money to replace these radios.
Commissioner White?
And the price on one radio? I mean, say the Holman Fire Department needs to do a fundraiser for radio replacement, how much money do they need to raise?
I'm not sure off the top of my head how many members they have, but these radios range from, a good middle of the road would be $5,000 for a radio. And Jay can speak to that.
Commissioner White, sorry for, I probably should have just come up here right at the beginning, because I knew what he was going to talk about. But, so for the cost per radio, if you're looking at the replacement, a suitable replacement of the Motorola brand radio, you're talking ballpark $5,000, what are you saying, per unit? If, some of the other lower-cost options that I'm looking for, that we had outtested in the county over the past couple of months, made by Kenwood, those are radios that are a brand that we've used in the past in the county and that people have liked in the past, those are going to be more in the $2,500 to $3,000 range per radio. The testing, preliminary testing that we did on those was that they met all of our needs, as far as the volunteer fire departments were concerned. Just like Mike said, the sheriff's department is completely upgraded, they're completely in line with any potential encryption updates that could happen, that the state could mandate, so we're okay with them. As far as the other agencies that the county itself, the county agency itself is responsible for, that would be departments. And then basically, like, you know, each of the departments has a couple of radios, just so that if they go work out in the field, they can communicate. And then, yeah, sheriff's department takes care of themselves. I had it when I was sitting back there, I came up here and I lost it. But the fire department's the big chunk. I mean, you're probably talking of the 650 or so radios that we have, more than half of them are fire radios. So that's where we're looking for, for the major chunk of funding. And that, the legislation that he's mentioning is for, I don't know if you looked it up or anything, it's for $250 million statewide. The northeast region is just completing its needs assessment across the entire region. Each of the individual regions in the state are going to make their assessments, and then they're going to share those. For example, this is kind of funny, the southwest was the first to complete their assessment. Their assessment was for a total for the entire region of $1.7 million. When Cook County was done with our needs assessment for just Cook County, ours was $3.2 million. So, you know, like, I think we're throwing a little bit more into the pot than what other regions are doing, because we don't have other sources of funding readily available to upgrade this stuff. So we're just throwing it all in and seeing what sticks against the wall. But we can always cross our fingers, right? And hope that they see that as a valuable...
Cross our fingers and contact our legislators.
That's right.
Mr. Watkins?
I just wanted to add a little context about the other mitigation strategies that we have in place for our fire departments currently. We've received from other agencies that have replaced their radios, their functional radios. So we're holding about 100 handheld radios that we roll out on a as-needed, first-come, first-served basis. So if a fire department comes to us and says a radio has failed and we don't have the funding available to replace it, we have about 100 handhelds, and then we have about 25 mobiles, the radios that go into rigs, to do the same. And so in addition to what Jay's talking about and what Mike's talking about, the avenues that we're trying to help them get funding, we've also been, you know, talking about the timeline and the end of life and saying, we need to budget for this stuff. But we've also done things like that as well, where we're taking radios from, Hennepin County donated us those 100 handhelds, when the school replaced their radios, those are functional radios. We retained them and are holding them in reserve in case we need to reallocate them. Itasca County, I believe, is another one that did the same with that for us, so...
Picked up some mobiles from Itasca County, we got a bunch of handhelds from Washington County. So I've been keeping my ear to the ground about opportunities for those backup radios. And already in the time that I've been here, I think I've deployed about 20 of those radios. But I picked up another bunch of them, so we kind of replaced them. We're going to be okay for a while for radios, but I have had that conversation with every single one of the chiefs to say, you have to start saving money. You have to start putting money away, because this legislation, the $250 million is still has a match to it. There has to be an agency match to it. So, you know, all of the departments are aware that they need to start saving money for replacement of radios, and it's becoming very critical for them as their radios start failing, so...
Commissioner White?
Radios fail because the batteries die?
That's one reason. Another reason is that the tuning in them can get so far off that when I try and retune them, they won't return, or else just wear and tear on the radios. A lot of times, we lose radios because the knobs break off, and what Mike was saying is 100% true. Motorola just won't even take time to even think about them anymore. So any kind of internal problems, any kind of electrical problems, any kind of problems with the actual physical dials or anything, or the connections of the antenna, they're done, we just recycle them.
The vast majority of the radios that the county purchased are what's called an XTS or XTL line model of radios from Motorola, and they ended support for that a couple of years ago. And they would repair those radios on an as-needed basis or on an as-parts-available basis. And we've gone past that. So in the past, when you'd have a component failure of a radio, we could send it into the Motorola depot and have it replaced for a flat rate, a couple hundred bucks, and it would come back to us fixed, certified. You can't do that anymore with the vast majority of the model of radios that we have, because they've reached end-of-life and Motorola isn't making those components anymore.
And so with the Kenwood, possible Kenwood replacement radios, would they communicate or interact with the Motorola's that the law enforcement has?
Completely, yep. So they all work on what's considered, it's called a P25 standard, so it's a public safety standard, level of security, and also the 800 megahertz frequency range that the ARMOUR system operates on. They're all certified for that range, they all work perfectly well together, because it just runs on the frequencies. So as long as it can read the frequencies and has permission on the system, any radio that is approved will work.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Administrator Yorki.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. A question about the price difference between the Motorola and the Kenwood. You said Motorola is about $5,000, and the Kenwoods are closer to like half that. And I'm just wondering, functionally, is there a big difference in the two, or what accounts for that big price difference?
This has been a bit of a point of contention in the radio community across the state. Motorola has a bit of a chokehold on the ARMOUR system, because most of the hardware that creates the ARMOUR system is Motorola hardware. So in the initial purchase of radios for the ARMOUR system back in the early 2000s, Motorola was identified as the vendor to use that, because they were the only radio brand that had approved radios on the system that they designed and created for Minnesota. So that was why everybody used Motorola radios. Since then, Motorola has improved its technology, yes, but also has really, really screamed their price up high. And there are other brands that have more of a diversified business plan, where the radios aren't such a huge part of their profit, and so they can offer the radios at a lower price and also slightly different technology for the software. Because Motorola sells the software connected to the radio itself, so when the radio dies, the software dies, too. Kenwood has the software separately. So when you buy the radio initially, you buy the license for the software. So every time you replace a radio, you don't replace the software, you just squip that same software into a new radio.
Gotcha.
And so you actually own the license for it, which makes the price go down significantly.
Is there any difference in like the durability of the equipment?
The, so I gave one of the radios to Ben Silence, and I gave one of the radios to Chief Morrison of the Gunflint Fire Department, both, and I hope they don't take offense to this, both of whom are known to be relatively rough on their equipment.
I was going to say, so Ben broke his...
We're getting here about that.
Yeah, exactly. Well, Ben will call me later and be like, what do you mean? I just have this thing banging around in my little sling. Yeah. And they had no problems with the functionality of them. They're all made to the same IP standard as what the Motorola's are made, they're all, you know, magnesium-encased. I mean, if we ran them over with a truck, who knows? They might function a little bit differently, but let's hope that's not general operating procedures. So as far as testing is concerned, they were the same, they functioned the same as the Motorola's.
Gotcha. Thanks.
We should clarify for yourselves and the public that we're not in dire straits here. Our radio system is operating, we're just having some forward thinking, knowing that these radios will need to be replaced at some point, so I don't want to scare anybody in the...
We appreciate the forward thinking. Commissioner White?
So we have these donated radios, and if battery lifespan is the issue, those should get used up before new ones are purchased?
To a point. At some point, the reliability of those, of the batteries and of these older aged-out radios is going to become kind of a hit-or-miss thing. So to me, I would rather have our firefighters have a radio that they can be 100% certain has the full eight-hour, 10-hour battery life and functionality, rather than continuing to trade out with our firefighters radios that worked for two hours and then the battery stopped. So it's, you know, like, yeah, we can use them, and we're going to keep using them because we kind of have to, but I would prefer to have, you know, especially if this legislation goes through and these guys come into bat and supporting it, and you as well, supporting it, is huge. Like, it's a really big step in the right direction for this funding, to make sure that all of the people that we rely on in our worst times have the best equipment that they can have.
I'd add that batteries are a component of this model radio that you still can get, and there are aftermarket options, too. So there's functional batteries available, $50 to $100 a battery. So not insignificant, but you can purchase new batteries when you need to.
That's helpful information. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sit on the AMC Public Safety Committee, and this is the fifth year we've been talking about this, so it's kind of about building momentum, building the case. If it doesn't pass this year, we're going to try again. It's quite ridiculous that we say, all right, public, you got an emergency? Well, you better hope you sold enough pancakes. Like, we need to be supporting this at a statewide level, and it's, to have our public safety rely on volunteers, like, it's wonderful that we have volunteers, but you're just shaking the dice. And it's not sustainable, it is not a long-term plan, and so there's going to be some, I think, some really significant reforms. And we already know how our volunteer base is shrinking, and even our paid base is shrinking, right? Even hospital workers or deputies, you know, we just don't have that many people out there. So we really need to support them in every way we can and have the tools to do the job. And even, like I said, even if we don't get it this time, we'll try again next time, but real strong support, this is more than Cook County, this is about supporting the state and trying to build the system better. So I don't know if there's any other weeds we need to get through here, but I just want to take that higher-level view of like, trying to build a better, longer system that's going to last, instead of patching it when emergencies arise, sort of thing. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this, and like I said, I've been sitting in those mains for four years, I know you certainly have as well. And, yeah, hopefully we'll get this done, and maybe not, because I think Commissioner Hawkins has a good read on the AMC read, and we'll just try again. Building that political case, I think, you know, sometimes you have to just kind of keep pushing, so...
Well, given that we need to keep pushing, is there a motion? Oh, please.
I was the clerk at Lutzen Township Clerk, and when we realized that we had some... some that were definitely failing, besides not being able to replace them, one of the things I'm going to ask that you look into are the ARPA funds or the new COVID funds, because one of the expenditures can be on communication. And we're talking EMT, EMS, out in the hinterland, needing to communicate. We did buy six new radios, so that we knew that we had those replaced. Granted, you know, we're trying to save some money, but I'm, I'm wondering if that might be something, as needed, you might look into those funds for the colony as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of supporting HF-1075 and SF-1576 in the public safety initiative.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
And waiting for a long time is our highway engineer, Robbie Haas. Thank you, Robbie, for your patience this morning.
Not used to this. Thank you. Happy to. Um, so the first thing, we have, we have a lot to go over, but they're all kind of related, which is fun. So the 2023 construction observation contract. Lot of money, lot of projects, lot of different funding sources. And so when we've talked about this in the past, you know, we did something similar last year in 2022, very similar process. We had a great experience working with WSB on it to deliver our projects last year. The reason we do this, the reason, again, for consulting services in this case, namely is I don't like being bored, and I don't want my staff to be bored. And so, you know, we have three staff members, four if you include me, to deliver construction projects in the summer. Realistically, to oversee those projects, somebody has to be on the ground all the time there, counting trucks, counting quantities, you know, whatever it is. That's one aspect of it. Then there's the project management side of it, processing that paperwork, keeping track of all of that stuff. You can imagine, three technicians and then myself, we're limited in what we can do. So we can either deliver two, maybe three, projects a year, or look at what we're proposing now. And so, and when you throw in the mix two projects like, you know, Fifth Avenue West, which is a massive project, last year, County Road 45, massive project, our Grand Portage realignment that we're working on, another massive project, you know, those ones, maybe we're looking at only being able to handle one of those projects in the summer, as opposed to two on top of a bunch of bridge replacements. I wouldn't propose this if I didn't think we had, or if I didn't know that we had the funding in place to do it. So it's not a question really of does the money exist, it's do we want to spend the money to do it? Right now, we are on track to deliver all of the projects that have been proposed. Waiting, I think the, the last one we're working on is a storage building on our campus that is basically done and can get sent to the state for review, so that means that'll be out for bid shortly. Similarly, we're working with Federal Highways and Federal Lands on our realignment up in Grand Portage to figure out kind of some highway easement. Paperwork in the weed stuff, that one's already been through the state review process, and we're picking up comments now, so that one will be out the door as well. As it stands, though, you know, that means we'll have, so it'd be Sawbill Creek Bridge Replacement, Junko Creek Bridge Replacement, Flute Reed Bridge Replacement, Fifth Avenue West Reconstruction, Grand Portage Reconstruction, uh, two facilities on our campus, and then a striping project, so we're at eight.
Is that it?
That's it. Um, all of that being said, all of these projects have very unique funding sources. I know at the end of the day, sometimes the curiosity becomes, what's the levy impact to this? And so realistically, looking at this, there's, there's two projects on our agenda for this summer, Sawbill Creek and Junko Creek, that would be levy-dependent. Junko Creek, we were fortunate enough to receive a whole bunch of different grant funding for, and so that one won't have a levy impact on it. So Sawbill Creek is our only project that is strictly levy-dependent. If our legislature comes through with some emergency bridge bonding, then that goes away, and yay, we can save $600,000. But, yeah, the main point of this is just to deliver a lot of projects. We need help to do it, and this is kind of the mechanism to do it. So at this point, I guess I would entertain, does anybody have any questions? I know there's a lot to kind of process here, so, yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Uh, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward, to have proposals like this. I think you've already demonstrated great success in the department and projects around the county, and I want to build on that and continue supporting you and continue building that, that, that success. I think the community at large really recognizes that and the great work that the department is, you and the department are doing. And, um, yeah, it's, it's, I think, very exciting to be, you know, really getting some stuff done. It's, um, it's impressive, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins?
I guess I will report, I came up at the legislative meeting yesterday also, and looks like you're gonna have a better shot at money than Mike Keport.
Take it.
So when they mentioned, they're pretty sure there will be an increase in local bridge funding, I went, oh, yeah, it'll make Robbie happy.
It will.
Me happy too. But, so, thank you.
And the taxpayers.
Yes. Well, it's gonna come out of this pocket or this pocket. People forget that.
And I'm just most thrilled, eight projects for the summer and fall. That's outstanding, and work that definitely needs to be done. So thank you for all your hard work with that, setting things up. Other comments?
Madam Chair, I guess I'll just add, and I've said this before, but it bears mentioning again for anybody who's, who's listening, Robbie has done an exceptional job of pursuing other funding sources, looking at grant opportunities, and really doing a lot of good work to take pressure off the levy. And in addition to doing a lot of projects, and really addressing some needs that have been sort of there for a long time, so I also want to say thanks.
Thank you.
So given that, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to award WSB the construction services contract as stated.
All right. Thank you much, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next one, so I touched on it a little bit, is our Junko Creek Bridge Replacement. For what it's worth, too, I did, I did have a question come about of what does SAP stand for? And so what that has to go towards is nomenclature as far as different projects. So SAP, in this particular case, is state aid project. Sometimes if you see them with the CP in front of it, county project. Uh, and then what doesn't make any sense, though, is if it's a federal project, it's SP. I don't know if that means state project, but still, whatever. Anyways, that's what kind of those nomenclatures mean. The reason this one in particular, though, is a state aid project, is because one of the funding sources that we were awarded comes from the state. It's from the DNR, and so that automatically made it a state aid project, even though we're not spending state aid money on it. A lot of times, too, if we go after bridge bonds, like Sawbill Creek, for example, we went after bridge bonds for, we will design it as a state aid project. We didn't get bridge bonds, so now it's a county project, but we don't change the number, or change the project designation, but it just helps stay organized on that stuff. We can really get into it. The 016 stands for Cook County, that's our number. Uh, and then typically, if it's a state aid project, the next three digits would designate the road. So like 612 would be the Gunflint, that's Kasaw 12. 617, you know, Kasaw 17, in that case. When they're county projects, that kind of gets thrown out the window. And then the last three numbers is just like a serial, just kind of numerical in order, the next one that comes up. Anyways, if you want to know more about project numbers, we can go over that another day. But anyways, Junko Creek, another one of our bridges that's been in the works for a long time, ones that I have ineffectually, effectually dubbed our legacy projects. They've just been out in the world for too long, talked about forever, designed, redesigned, and now we're gonna get it done, which is very exciting. This case, Yulin Brothers is the apparent low bidder, and I'd like to award it to them for $429,600. Does anybody have any questions about that one?
Any questions or comments? Not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to award the contract to the low bidder of Yulin Brothers of Cloquet in the amount of $429,600.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Storley. Do we have support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Oh, and one other thing with that project, too, all the grant funds. We've got too much grant money, funny enough, from a few different sources. So what's kind of unique with that one is one of the funding sources is through COVID relief funds that were directly distributed to the Highway Department. We might be able, I'm pretty sure I can use some of that, call it leftover funds, to offset levy costs from Sawbill Creek, for example. So at the end of the day, with all this construction inspection and stuff, conservatively, I think I had forwarded something that said levy dollars would be like $56,000 in construction inspection, it might be zero. Uh, so it just kind of depends how things fall with this, but anyways, just an aside. Fifth Avenue, another one of those that's been talked about for a long time, public meetings, very well attended, which is awesome. A big project, we're doing it in partnership with the city of Grand Marais, and then also our soil and water friends were able to secure a grant for us for $200,000 on that project. And so, again, I would, it's a big project. You know, in total, you know, the Yulin Brothers is the apparent low bidder at, you know, just under 5.3 million. As far as, that's not all on the county's side of things, that's the project on the whole. Uh, so, you know, on the whole, we're looking at 5.3, but as far as what our responsibility is, Cook County, is about 3.5. And then what Grand Marais is responsible for is just under about 1.8. Uh, and so I've been in touch with, with Mayor Benson and Administrator Roth about, you know, this ongoing process as we've been working through the design and making sure that they're comfortable with the, with the bid as well. Our estimate was about 4.9 million, and so that fact that this came in a little bit higher, not uncomfortably higher by any means, you know, we're within about eight, nine percent, but just to make sure that everybody's good as far as costs are concerned, and everyone is. And so it's great, and this will be a good one to get done.
Great. Thank you. Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Thank you for all this. Just give me a refresher on the date of this, 'cause they're gonna be busy on Junko Creek versus out here on the road.
Yes, and so I, so like Fifth Avenue, for example, will probably be all summer, so most likely the second road bands come off mid-May-ish, probably up until it snows. It's not gonna be like one big mud pit, you know, it's not, we're gonna rip everything up, and then it's just gonna be disgusting, it'll be a staged approach. But I would expect, you know, right now, we have a detour for Fifth Avenue West all summer long, so you can't, you know, people can, will be able to get in and out of their houses, for example. You can come to the courthouse and get in and out, but there will be times where there'll be utility interruptions, and we're working on, right now, I think we'll have a trailer, a construction trailer parked somewhere, maybe a bulletin board, and hopefully have updated schedules so people really know, you know, when to expect that kind of stuff. Junko Creek, if I remember correctly, I think is July, if I remember right. I can look back in the specs and double-check, but we're staggering that one with Sawbill Creek, so Junko will go first, takes about a month to do something like that. That one will also have a detour, so I apologize for everybody that uses Ball Club Road to get up to the grade. About a month there, you will not be able to. So you have to go down Devil Track Road to Valley Creek Road, and then go north up to the grade. So it'll be a little roundabout, but we can get the project done faster, and it's cheaper to do it that way. We rarely have an opportunity for detours, so it's kind of nice to be able to use them, even though they're annoying. I'm not denying that at all. Um, yeah, so I think Junko will be about a month, Fifth Avenue will most likely be all summer. Yes.
Other questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion. I will move to approve or award the contract to the low bidder, Yulin Brothers, for 5.3 Support, anyone? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And returning to the microphone, Jay Decoutre. And Rowan Watkins.
All right, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me back. This is a, a fun one. It's always fun when I can come and tell you that I'm gonna make some money instead of spend some money. So as I included in the, in the item for the agenda, a brief description of the history of Northwestern Radio up here, they've provided radio services for many, many years on a substandard tower located right below the crest of the hill. That tower is gonna be going away, also does not need their, or does not meet their needs anymore, so they are looking for different housing for their station. We happen to have some extra space on our new GM-11 tower, which is the self-supporting smaller tower that the county owns up on top of the hill, and thus we're going to be, the, the contract before you is to co-locate their station on that tower. They will provide their own building, they will provide their own slab, they will provide their own electricity. They're going to be paying us for the incumb, uh, appurtenances on the tower and also the ground space that they're gonna be using. Those two items total 644 a month for the first year, and then there's a 3% escalator on that every year following, and it's a 25-year agreement. So very similar to other agreements that we, that we've done in the past. Northwestern Radio wanted to use their, their form lease documents, so it took a little bit longer to negotiate out some of the, uh, in, well, some of the liability coverages that we want as the county, but we got there with them, and everything has been checked by the county attorney and is in line with what our expectations are.
I think we certainly like the fact that it's generating almost $8,000 a year. That's a real plus, and there's an escalator built in there, which is really positive. When would this be built?
Uh, this would be done over the course of the summer. I'm not exactly sure when they would be doing that. Likely, I would assume probably June, like later June, was when they would be coming up to remove their equipment from the, from the small tower, and then having the concrete slab placed, the, their container. It's gonna basically be a little container, like a shipping container that is built in, with electricity and air conditioning and such for their equipment inside of it. So they'll get all their stuff in place, and then they'll take their stuff down from the other tower, move it over, put everything up, test, 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 and then before they're actually able to, to hit-go and have it be completely done, we need to make sure that, that all of the interference studies that we've had done and the structural studies that we've had done ring true with what the actual, in the real world, evidence is, so.
So from start to the time all the testing is done and you're ready to roll, how long a period for that?
Um, I, I'll, I still have to work that out with them. I would say probably as short as a couple of weeks, probably as long as a month. So it's not gonna take terribly long to do it. It's not a ton of equipment. They're going to be basically placing one transmit antenna and one receive antenna on the, on the tower, that's gonna fulfill all the needs for their station. So, so not a ton of stuff on the tower, too. We still have some more space on that tower for other, other tenants if the opportunity arises, so.
Other questions? Commissioner Storley?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Jay, for working on this. What, it says that it's Northwestern Radio provided radio services to Grand Marais. Exactly what do they do?
Uh, well, I mean, it's just radio coverage for the, the Christian broadcasting channels that, that you pick up on the radio. So Northwestern Radio is a large consortium of several Christian broadcasting channels, and so, you know, if you, as you scroll through your, through your dial in your car, you'll get, you know, Minnesota Public Radio, you'll get, you'll get WTIP, and then you'll get probably two or three different Christian broadcasting channels, and those currently are on that one tower up there. And so we'll, we'll be transitioning those channels over.
Good question. Are there questions? Would there be a motion? Commissioner White?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the negotiated tenant agreement between Cook County and Northwestern Radio.
Thank you Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. One other thing, I just want to toss out there just for fun. So in negotiating some of the other contracts that we've been working on with the Forest Service and with the Minnesota DNR, I uncovered a clause in one of our contracts with the Minnesota Department of Transportation about the mid-trail tower, where we're not supposed to be paying for electricity on that. So, so they picked, they're picking up the bill for our electricity now, so.
Oh, alright.
It's going to save us about $3,000 or $4,000 a year or two, so.
Do they back pay us?
I don't think that's how the agreement works. We're just glad to have, to have them on the tower and glad to have the coverage up in that area, so. So here going forward, this is why reading the fine print is a really good idea, so we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your good eyes. All right, Assessor Thompson is with us to talk a little bit about a calendar item.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners. So the first item I have on the list today is to schedule the County Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting. We have to do this after the second Friday in June, we have to do it before the end of June. We can recess the meeting if we want for up to 10 days. But typically, we've, we've targeted a Thursday in June. I've been looking at the calendar and including everybody that would, would be required to attend the meeting, looking at the week of June 12th through, I think it's the 7th, 15th, or the 17th, and that Thursday, it looks like most, most of us are available in our Outlook calendars, I don't know if you have anything else planned in your, in your calendars, but other than that, the Commissioners' room has been reserved for court administration a lot during that month. My idea was to do similar to last year where we schedule about a two or three hour meeting, and we can schedule appointments for the first hour or two, and then kind of have that six to seven o'clock, the open, where people can walk in. We typically have required an appointment, but even though that's a requirement we have in place, we do still allow walk-ins. So I guess, leaving it up to the Board to decide, I looked at, if we were to do this on Monday the 12th, the Commissioners' room would be available from four to seven, which would be a three hour window. If we were looking at another day that week, it would probably have to be a five to seven meeting, and we could do five to eight, I don't know if anybody wants to go that late, but, you know, that's what I was, was kind of looking at, is Monday is the only day that the Commissioners' room would be available, four to seven. Otherwise, we could look at doing something five to seven, and if we did run short of time or have a lot of appointments, we could recess the meeting and reconvene.
So I'd like to recommend, I've looked through the calendar carefully, that we do that four to seven on the 12th, I think that's a really good thing. I've also looked at the community calendar to see what other events besides here in the county are going on, and it looks like Monday the 12th is really clear.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My question though is, isn't it after the second Tuesday of the month?
The second Friday of the month.
Friday? Okay. Oh, June is, early.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah.
Madam Chair, I won't be available the 12th, I'll be in Lewis.
Ah, alright.
I could be late, or you could have a quorum without me. It's true. Not, not a big deal.
What time would you be back?
You're asking me about time?
I'm challenging you.
Yeah, it's usually a three hour meeting, so that's 3:30, so 5:30 at the earliest, but usually there's something after the meeting, so six, seven, oftentimes seven, I guess, is how, how that would get. I mean, and, you know, you're not the only one concerned about that timeline, too, my family is. What takes you so long?
Let's see.
But again, like I said, I don't need to be there to hold a quorum, so if that works for everybody else, go for it, I'm not.
How does Tuesday the 13th work? Again, that would be a five to seven.
Yeah, I mean, for me, any day that week works, that's kind of the priority of my schedule, so.
It looked to me like Monday and Tuesday were the only days that there was freedom on all our schedules, so.
I think five to seven for me on Tuesday the 13th, June 13th would work.
Other Commissioners? Alright, that's okay. It's looking like five to seven on Tuesday the 13th.
Alright, perfect, thank you Madam Chair.
Oh, on that note, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to schedule that meeting for Tuesday the 13th from five to, five o'clock, I guess. Do we need that end time in there?
We typically set the end time at 7:00 PM. The statute says that we, if we're holding a regular board, which is using the County Commissioners and not a special board, we have to allow appointments all the way up to 7:00 PM, and we can't close the meeting unless we do a meeting on Saturday.
Thank you. So then, yes, the motion is five to seven.
Alright, five to seven for our motion, is there support? Thank you Commissioner Storley. So we have a motion and support for Tuesday the 13th from five to seven here in the Commissioners' room. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners. The second item I had on today's agenda is just an update on the Tibe Blatnik appraisal and the Pilt payments, the payment in lieu of taxes that we received last week on Monday the 6th. I met with Congressman Stauber, some representatives from Lake and St. Louis Counties, as well as a geologist, Dr. Dean Peterson. The geologist gave a presentation to us, and specifically on the minerals and the potential of the mineral value within the Boundary Waters for the purpose of our appraisal and our payment in lieu of tax calculation. One thing that, you know, was brought to my attention is that, you know, the appraiser has, has, you know, indicated that the mineral potential in the Boundary Waters is highly speculative and that there's not, you know, proven deposits, there's not core samples, which is not the case, there are some core samples, and there are what's called a NI43101 mineral report, and there are thousands of these, these are documented reports by geologists and surveyors, specifically within the Boundary Waters. He cited that there were over 27,000 documented outcroppings, things that geologists are saying are pretty good indicators of the minerals and consistent with other exploration outside of the Boundary Waters. So through this process, he was able to give a rough estimate of the tonnage of different materials that would be under the grounds of the Tibe Blatnik lands, and through that process, that's how Lake Cook and St. Louis Counties estimated, based on existing mining leases and royalty payments to landowners, the type of potential that, that could come from the minerals that exist in there. But the takeaway from the meeting is that Congressman Stauber intends to put forward some legislation in Washington that would continue our payments, what we'd been receiving between 2008 and 2018, through the 2018 and 2028 timeframe, that 10-year window, and this would include, you know, not, not paying back what we've received for the last five years, and just continuing that on up until the next appraisal is done. Congressman Stauber did advise the three counties that we should start preparing for our 2028 appraisal now. That would include, you know, potentially contracting with an appraiser. It was highly encouraged that the three counties continue to work in unison, you know, whether we order a single appraisal or three appraisals, one for each county, that should be something that we're planning for and putting into the budget. I'm not sure, you know, if that falls into like an assessor line item in our budget to, to plan for this appraisal every 10 years, we can certainly come up with an estimate of what we think it would cost and, and kind of spread that out over the 10-year periods. Right now, we're working with a five-year window before 2028. And also, working with these geologists and experts in the industry, in fact, there are appraisers, mineral appraisers, that specifically work on items like this, that can give you a number of, an opinion of value based off of the facts, the data that exists, the surveys that exist, the reports that exist. So I think that moving forward, you know, the county's working with these experts, and also getting the Forest Service to sit down with some of these experts. The, the geologist, Dr. Dean Peterson, gave a very compelling presentation, and, and was very clear that this is not speculative information, this is information based off of data and research. So we will move towards preparing for the 2028 appraisal, and know that we're, we're hoping for some assistance in Washington on this issue.
Thank you very much for the update, and I appreciate our Commissioners who attended the meeting, and Administrator Yorki, it's important work.
Any update on the Forest Service decision, final decision?
Yes, so we, the Lake County Assessor had emailed prior to our meeting, and we have not heard back. Currently, the status is, the appraisal was submitted to the counties, we received that November 11th, or that's when the counties had submitted their appeal to the Forest Service. Since then, we've kind of been waiting to hear back on, you know, how this moves forward. Obviously, in the original 2018 appraisal, we had appealed, there was also some pressure from some lawmakers and lobbyists, and they ended up, the Forest Service decided they were going to order a reappraisal. So we're, we're kind of in that window where the next step could be, you know, potentially they order another appraisal, or, you know, the, the pass it on to the Secretary of Ag to make that final determination. I do think it would be wise for the three counties to submit a letter to the Secretary of Ag and kind of express in just a one-page our position on how we feel the appraisal reflects the value, and, and some of the reasons why we think the Secretary of Ag should use some other information other than those two appraisals to make that final determination of the value. And I'm certainly happy to work with Commissioners on, on drafting something up with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Did I see Commissioner Storley headed? No, okay. Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you, Assessor Thompson. So considering that the Forest Service final decision hasn't happened yet, do you think, and I fully agree with your recommendation to write that letter, do you think it would be a good idea to ask for a mineral appraisal as a consideration? Is that what you were saying but not saying with, with that letter?
Well, yes, Commissioner Mills, I do think that, based on the knowledge of the experts in the industry, I mean, obviously, when I sat down with this four years ago, five years ago, I don't have any mineral valuation experience, this is a very specific field, very small field of, of experts. But once you've actually sat down and talked with somebody who's worked their entire life in this industry, it's a very compelling argument, and I don't believe that the two appraisers that did the 2018 valuations have that expertise. I don't think they've, I don't think they've done the due diligence to gain that knowledge, and I, I think that it would, it would be wise to incorporate the, the knowledge and where that knowledge is coming from into this letter and saying, maybe we do need a geologist or a mineral valuation expert to be part of this process every time, because the Tibe Blatnik, the way it's written, it says the fair appraised value of the, of the Tibe Blatnik lands, and I don't think that, based on speaking with experts in the mining industry and the, and the geologist, that we're getting that fair valuation.
So I know I'm being careful with my words. I would, I think, me personally, and we as a board maybe should talk about this a little bit more, would be more comfortable asking Representative Stauber to introduce legislation after we get that final, final determination from the Forest Service. And before we get that final determination, I would like us to do, as you say, try to engage with that letter and have this recommendation of a mineral appraisal in there. And then, we can, you know, ask Representative Stauber to, to introduce some legislation. And I know timing might be tricky just with how the legislature works, but I just think that might give us the best shake, and both be cautious as well as advocating for our best interests, so. At some point, I would like to touch, myself, I'm going to try to touch base with John Angaro just to get a better handle on this, because I don't really know, you know, much. And certainly navigating that, that landscape is not, that political landscape and legislative landscape is not my forte either, so. But I just, that, that order of operations makes sense to me, like, just because I know, I know introducing legislation is not, it's not nothing, right? There's a lot of work in that, and so maybe it's unnecessary, or maybe it is necessary, and if it's, maybe we should figure out if it's necessary first before we spend that political capital, or he does, so, but.
Administrator Yorki.
Thank you Madam Chair. Bob, could you remind us the, the deadline by which the Secretary of Agriculture has to provide a decision on our appeal?
So I thought that we had six months from the date that we had submitted our appeal.
That's what I understood.
That, that's what I recall the timeframe was, was that as soon as we were, we had that deadline, I think it was November 13th to provide the response.
Okay.
And then from that moving forward to the, the Secretary's opinion would be six months. There may be, it may be six months to, for the Forest Service to respond to that additional info we gave, and then there might, it might trigger another timeframe for the Secretary of Ag to take all of the provided info in, and make that determination. So I guess I'm, I'm not sure, I do think that submitting that letter to the Secretary of Ag, some of the things that we can express to them are, number one, the mineral, the mineral potential, and the fact that the second appraisal on the whole Boundary Waters gave a valuation of $9.5 million on potential minerals, which, when you look at the royalties and the leases that exist, it, it's a complete abomination of, you know, a million acres of high-grade, high-potential minerals. And, you know, some of the other things are, looking at some of our assessed values, I mean, just from, from, from Headstrom's Lumber to the end of the Gunflint Trail on 808 parcels, we have over $200 million in taxable real estate value. That's on less than 5,000 acres, so when you're talking 250,000 acres that are very similar, it just, it just clearly shows that there's a disparity there. Also, you know, we can express what the assessed valuations are and how those are come up with. There's a number of things that I think the Secretary of Ag could take into account in making that final determination, and those two appraisals, those, those low valuations from our perspective are just pieces of the puzzle.
Commissioner Storley.
Thank you. To follow up on Commissioner Mills' thoughts, I'll be meeting with Arrowhead Counties tomorrow night, and John Angaro will give us a, so I'm going to ask him some of the steps you're suggesting, and report back.
Excellent. Well, I clearly think in the meantime, regardless of, of what you hear tomorrow night, it certainly seems like sending a letter, three counties united, and with more information related to minerals and their value, is really important for us to do, to work together with our other counties here in northeastern Minnesota, and I'd be happy, on behalf of the Board, to help you write something and put something together.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I just want to also thank Assessor Thompson for being on this. So much work, and it's so important, you're doing such a great job, it's really appreciated, and the impacts, the potential impacts are huge for our community, and, and yeah, it's, you have a full plate, and then you're doing this, so just want to give a shout out there, thank you.
Thanks, thanks Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, I just want to, you beat me to the punch, but I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing, Bob has spent a lot of time on this issue, and has brought his considerable appraisal expertise to bear, and has also, as he pointed out, become very knowledgeable about issues. expertise to bear, and has also, as he pointed out, become very knowledgeable about issues like mining and the value of minerals. And that has really, really strengthened our argument. So Bob, I just want to say publicly, thanks so much for that work.
Thank you, Administrator Yorki. I actually wanted to also say, I'm scheduled to go and visit, they finally reopened the Drill Core Library, big, huge warehouses over, I think, in Hibbing-Chisholm area, where they've stored these historical drill cores. I'm learning a little bit, I initially submitted 17 different drill holes to go and analyze, and some of these drill holes are hundreds and hundreds of feet of core. So I got a response from the Drill Core Library, and they said, you know, what depths are you looking for? And I said, well, I'm kind of new to this, so why don't we just pull one or two holes, and we'll pull the entire length? And he said, that's probably, you know, your best bet, you don't want to select a certain depth unless you know what depth you're looking for, you know, you have to kind of be an expert. So I reached out to Dean Peterson to get kind of his insight. A couple of the drill cores that I'm going to be looking at are just southwest of Brule Lake, and there's a Brule Lake outcropping noted in the geology and the aeromagnetic mapping of the minerals and the outcroppings that were documented. So I'm excited to find, see what I find in that drill core sample, and do a little more research than I think the appraisers did.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, I retract my, retract my nickname as next level and hand it over to. That's, that is incredible, and, yeah, I'm a little bit familiar with those warehouses. We had a kind of a briefing, mini tour, not, I guess we had a tour of the warehouse, but through End Club when I was, well, that was, yeah, years, years ago, but it is bananas, the, just the number of cores they have, and I had no idea there was all this information of our area and what's below it and in the Boundary Waters, and, and one of the presenters was one of the people collecting those drill cores, so that was pretty cool. And then they talked about the machine that's needed to do it, I think there's like one or two in the world or something, and, and you have to rent it, and it's like incredibly expensive to do, so it's funny that the state doesn't own that, or maybe, maybe things have changed since then, I don't know, but what an opportunity, that's amazing.
Yeah. One thing interesting I learned is that you actually weigh more up here in Cook County than you would down, say, somewhere in central Minnesota. The gravitational pull is stronger in Cook County.
I knew it.
That's why so many people are attracted here.
Well, thank you so much for your work, we just really appreciate it, and, and we will also look forward to our meeting in June.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. To press now, to get that date put on, right?
Yeah.
We'll have something coming in the mail soon. All right. Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request from the Public Health and Human Services, the fiscal administrator there. A resolution to transfer authority from the auditor's office to the fiscal supervisor to purchase, track, and safely secure gift cards in accordance with audit standards and DHS, Department of Human Services, requirements for clients needing this assistance. Public Health regularly purchases gift cards, particularly fuel gift cards from Holiday, food gift cards from Johnson's, disseminates them to clients in need, and then seeks reimbursement from various state or federal grants. And this is an acceptable practice that counties have done with the Department of Human Services for many years, and been a practice here at our department going back many years. The Office of the State Auditors have expressed concerns with government use of gift cards generally, as they are cash equivalents and need to be stored until they are spent, and that's why this came up, they issued an opinion on gift cards generally. But PHHS has a process in place with procedures of how to disseminate the gift cards equitably, a tracking system, other internal controls that meet the requirements of an impress fund to the satisfaction of our office. An impress fund is just someone has a certain amount of cash authorized for their use in an office, we have several of those in Cook County, and then they account for that through a tracking mechanism, and as the funds are depleted, then they make a request along with documentation of the spending of those funds, and then they're replenished. That's what an impress fund is. So this is kind of similar, because the state auditors say that a gift card is really cash, because you're storing it, just as you would cash. And so this just formalizes what they're already doing, but, and then acknowledges that we believe they have the proper controls in place to manage this without it staying in the county treasurer's office. Just to give you an idea, so they, the cards are individually numbered, and the cards on hand are recorded on a tracking sheet, cards are maintained in a combination locked safe in the fiscal supervisor's office with limited access to fiscal staff only. They make their requests, all staff requests greater than $100 must be approved by a particular supervisor, smaller amounts can come directly to the fiscal supervisor, and the dispersed cards are documented, documented as a reduction on the tracking sheet, they're left at the front desk to be picked up by the client, or a social worker hand delivers the cards to the client, and they're very specific cards, so it's, it's either fuel or food that they use these for, so we're very comfortable with that, that it stays in the hands of Public Health Human Services. And just like to approve the resolution to document this, make it formal.
It sounds like everything is managed in a very safe and secure way, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments for Auditor Powers? So is there a motion to approve by resolution?
There is, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any other further discussion or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Yorki.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to give you an update today on a couple of things, one being our capital improvement plan process. I was unable to attend the February 28th meeting, and so was unable to give a report on the open house sessions that we had on February 16th. This was the second of two meetings that we sponsored to gather public input on the development of the CIP. And I guess, similarly to the first open house meetings, we didn't get huge turnout. And this has been our experience, not only with the CIP meetings, but also, pardon me, also with meetings that we've held regarding construction, road construction projects. It's just really difficult to get people to public meetings unless they're upset, apparently. And so, we, we are continuing to collect public feedback on the CIP. We do have all the information that was presented on February 16th on the county website, and so for folks who were unable to attend on February 16th, they can go to our website and see all the information that we shared. There's also an online survey that folks can fill out to provide feedback. We are very, very earnest about wanting the public to provide information and comment to inform the development of the CIP. I'd also like to note that Commissioner White has scheduled a meeting with her constituents at the Hovland Town Hall on March 25th. I will be there, and Brian Silas, our maintenance director, will be there to talk about the CIP, and to listen to concerns, and hopefully gather some good information that we can use to, to complete the development of that plan. So I just want to use this opportunity to strongly encourage anyone who's listening to go to the website and provide, provide comment on the information that is posted there. We really want to make sure that the public is engaged in this, in this process, so. That's, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to note is that we continue to work on the development of our strategic plan. We do have a internal steering committee, which includes Commissioner White and also Commissioner Hawkins in that process. And we're really just working on defining the process, and particularly how best to engage staff in this conversation, because their, their buy-in, their contribution to the development of the plan is vitally important to its success. And so we want to make sure that we have a solid process to, to inform the development of the strategic plan. And so I think I'd mentioned in an earlier meeting that we had, we had hoped to complete the plan by mid-year, it's probably going to stretch into fall at this point, just to make sure that we have ample time to engage staff, and that it's a meaningful dialogue with, with everybody in the organization. Also, we are going to be finding ways to engage clients in getting their assessment of how the organization operates, and what, if any, opportunities there are for improvement. So all of that is in the works. Again, this is a project that we're doing strictly with, with internal support, we don't have any consultant assisting us on this, and I think we do have more than sufficient expertise within our steering committee to successfully complete this project. So those are kind of the two biggies that I wanted to share this morning, and I guess I'll stop there.
All right. Commissioner White?
Number one biggie that you were talking about, Commissioner Hawkins has been traveling around with the printouts from session two, handing them out to people, and there's a big stack of them at the Hovland Post Office, and we'll have them for when Administrator Yorki and Brian Silas show up too, so. So to those people, it's, everyone's invited, it's just not the people that live in District One. Come prepared with your questions that you might have, and here's your chance, I mean, we're going to get to really ask questions that will arise as you have an opportunity to talk about what's going on, so, yeah, looking forward to it.
And Commissioner White, that's Saturday, March 25th at 10:00?
Saturday, March 25th at 10:00. All right, just wanted to get that out there. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner White. And I just also want to note, this is your chance again, and this time it's in the neighborhood, right? So it's more convenient, right, for the District One. We've already had, you know, three meetings of this session here with, as Administrator Yorki said, limited attendance, so, and I suspect you're going to have a good turnout, and I really appreciate you scheduling that, and I really appreciate your willingness.
And it's not during the workday?
Well, we have, yeah, 6:00 PM, 1:00, 2:00 here, so.
6:00 PM on a Wednesday is still a workday.
It's, I work Saturdays. That's a workday. It's, we just have to have, yeah, we have to have schedule, we have to have various times everywhere, so, but I think you're going to have a wonderful turnout again, and on that note, if we still do not yet have enough feedback, I'm wondering if we should have one up the trail, if we should have one, and not to draw this process out, but if we really want to get, yeah, and I am drawing it out, yeah. Point noted, but, but, yeah, up the trail, if we could get more success there, because we've had some good turnouts in person there, and then also, I know the West End has, you know, the, the town meetings and township meetings.
We have tonight the annual meeting, yeah.
Oh, the annual, yeah, so bring some of those, bring some of those paper copies if you can, and, or just the link, or whatever.
I have 50 to 100 different handouts.
Well done.
She is prepared. My printer was pretty warm.
Commissioner Hawkins, you had your hand up.
Oh, I just wanted to respond to different places, and I think each commissioner should make that decision in your own community. I've, I've also put that out there, that if any groups want to invite, I haven't received one from a group. I did say, somebody, somebody else did say, you should just pick a date and do this, and I'm like, well, that's kind of what I was trying to get away from, but.
Well, we did that.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, so I, I agree, we, we are making the attempt, and yes, maybe, we'll see what happens, but I do think, I appreciate that we are, as a group, are trying to get the word out there, and trying to get public input.
And the onus is now on the public.
That's what I want to say.
I mean, I'm not kidding, I mean, like, we're trying to do this, and if, in all these different avenues, and here's a chance to, to learn something that's going to be happening, because really, do you have any idea what, as I have told, I have been entrusted to spend, to make decisions on between 14 and 40 million dollars, wouldn't you really like me to know something about how you feel about this? Really? I mean, that's a lot of money, so, okay, that's it.
But, Madam Chair, I don't know if, like, I'm pre, never mind. I was going to say, the, the microphone picks up well, you know, it's.
I am, voice is for emphasis, emphasis, the language is just all clear, and it's a little louder, because absolutely, it's imperative for a democracy to work, if you want your voice heard, then you need to know what you're talking about.
Here, Chair.
Thank you. Anything else, Administrator Yorki?
I don't, I don't think I can top that, no, that's, that's it for me.
All right. Well, we'll move on to employee and commissioner concerns, and one of the areas that we as commissioners have been working on for a couple of months now, is the performance review for Administrator Yorki. And so today, I'd like to share just a brief summary for the public of what's been going on. In mid-February, individuals both inside and outside of our county organization were sent a cover lever, letter, and a performance review evaluation form to assist us as a county board in the evaluation of Administrator Yorki. And this particular type of performance evaluation is often referred to as a 360, it's an evaluation that includes the circle of all the people that are looking at you, people that work with you, people that are in the public, people that are on a commissioner or board with you, and it included department heads, other county employees, commissioners, and other elected officials, as well as members of the public. And Administrator Yorki completed the very same tool that was given to others so that he could evaluate himself, and that way you can compare your own perceptions to that of others. And information was gathered in a variety of areas, including professional knowledge, leadership, communication, planning and innovation, managing results and resources, community and staff relations, and intergovernmental relations. And then within each area, we gathered comments that were written, as well as telling the percentage of individuals marking different categories, which were exceeding expectations, meet expectations, or needs improvement, or no basis for judgment. And in these areas, evaluators generally felt our administrator met or exceeded expectations. So last Thursday, March 9th, we had a special meeting, a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute, from 9:00 to 11:00, right here in the commissioner's room, and the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the results of the performance review, and each commissioner was tasked with leading the analysis and discussion of results in a couple of areas that were evaluated. And after about an hour and a half of discussion, we then talked about what we viewed as areas to consider for the development of goals. And goals to be developed are around sharing James' professional training and development with others in the organization in order to be a good model, also a professional growth, increasing visibility throughout the organization, and looking at additional strategies for communication within our organization. And Administrator Yorki is currently in the process of developing goals based on that 360 process and his work with us, the county board, last week. And to me, what is most interesting about the process is that, for the most part, the perceptions of those working both within county government and our public, their thoughts were in alignment with what our county administrator thought about his own performance. So it was a very rigorous process, but we appreciate all the work that many individuals have done in order to help us get to this point, and we are appreciative, James, of you participating in this rigorous process as well.
Well, I certainly appreciate all the time that, that you, Madam Chair, and the other commissioners put into doing this assessment. It's incredibly helpful to, to have that feedback and to use it to, as you said, develop goals and make sure that I am doing my job in an effective way. There are always things that you can do better, and I really appreciate the opportunity to have the, that conversation with the five of you, and thank you to everyone who completed that survey, I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much.
I want to echo the thanks, Madam Chair, you did a phenomenal You did a phenomenal job with this process, very thorough, the full 360. And I just really appreciate the efforts that you, you put into that. It's impossible to beat.
I don't know about that, but, moving on, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Hawkins, anything to report this month?
Um, well, I'll report for the local elected official board for, or these Minnesota office of job training. Their May 24th meeting will be in this room.
Whoa.
They're going around to all of the counties and I was asked to check for May 24th and it was open on our calendars, so I reserved this room for that day. Just a heads up.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner White.
Well, it was another invigorating advisory committee meeting with the Council on Aging. It's an organization that is rebuilding with, on all fronts. And it's the hub and they feed people and they've got a lot of good things planned and they're seeking volunteers, if anybody would like to be involved to do some volunteering in different places and not on any regular basis if need be. Like, that's a very important thing. I also, I had my first taste of two two-hour Zoom meetings in the same day. I would like to tell you that is actually not a very healthy way to spend one's time. The aging process is very rapid, muscles atrophy. And so, the.
That's why I'm in the state I'm in.
Not commenting on anyone else. So, I, but I did get in, again, when I'm part of these, like, the mental health advisory council and with all of these different committees, I feel like I am just soaking in information and am not at a place to ask a lot of questions to fully understand what's going on. Could be the sitting, but I think it is actually, there's just a lot of information from a lot of different participants who are working together to provide services or to help to improve the life of people in Cook County, so. But I do understand what's going down, on down at the hub, so. That one is, it's a place where everyone can get involved, so, easily.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think you summarized a lot of our county operations very well. There's a lot of ins and outs and factors and players and information and the fire hose and all that. We have a meeting, a joint EDA-HRA meeting this afternoon at 3:00 to discuss more about potential merger and what that may or may not look like. It's been a pretty, pretty excellent conversation thus far. There's been a lot of questions, a lot of concerns and a lot of thought and, and really trying to both be careful as well as be aggressive on housing and to do what makes the most sense for our community in the, in the long run, not just right now necessarily. Just one thing I want to remind us is that according to the housing study that was done by the HRA, or EDA, or.
EDA.
Yeah, the most recent housing, thank you, thank you. Most recent housing study is by 2026, we need 500 to 600 more units and however you dice that, cut it in half if you want, that's still astounding. Cut it in 20 pieces and that's, I think, about what we've been doing. And that's not workforce housing, if, if you take it to that scale. So, this is, I think, focusing on that workforce housing. And so, that's a lot of work and, and a lot of time and a lot of resources and a lot of stress for the community, stress for employers, stress for individuals, workers. We're all feeling it. But we're hoping to, to make some good progress, good long-term progress. That, that makes sense. Also wanted to report and sorry, Commissioner Starley, if I'm taking your thunder here, but there's 11 new childcare providers in January. Providers are defined as, right, a person working in that field, not necessarily a whole center, right? But that is a significant increase in our staffing for that. So, I think that's really exciting. February numbers are not yet out and I'm, I can't imagine the trend to just keep going up. But I, I do believe that our efforts in PHHS as well as the, the EDA, just the whole community childcare initiative is, is contributing to that, including our subsidy. But there's still much, much more work to be done, including making it affordable for people because that's not the case yet. Right now, we, we're just trying to get people to, we're trying to get those spots available and then we can also work on ways to help, help parents afford it. There was something else here. Oh, just, just back to the EDA-HRA stuff. The reason I share that is there, I just want everyone to be aware of it and, and that things are going on and it is going to come back to us, as I've said before, to decide. But I'd like to keep everyone as informed as possible. And, and on that note, we did have a EDA Personnel Committee meeting to talk about potential structure, how that might work, look if we did do that. And, and we included the HRA Chair as well as HRA Director to kind of help sort through that. And, and Mayor Benson and I were, were there and Pat Campanero on the EDA side of things. And, and it's, it's, it, it seems like we're on a similar page in, in that supporting, if it's the same amount of work that needs to get done, just how do you prioritize it? How do you address it? What's the most efficient way to do that? What's the most productive way to do that? And, and how much are we actually willing to, to, to put forward to get that work done? So, there'll be more talks this afternoon and I'm, I'm hopeful there, so. Really, really productive. I guess that's maybe it. And yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I attended virtually the Northeastern Minnesota Housing Consortium. It was very informative with the fact that this group has around $2 million to put forward to housing and there was three proposals on how to spend that. I have a handout and I'll have that put in the packet for next week, next meeting. Just in general, they hand out a couple of times a year, the statistics for each county, the numbers of people, what the income is and all that, and they updated it last year. Probably by the end of this year, we'll get 22, but it might be helpful for Commissioner White and all of us to kind of see where that all is. Yesterday, Commissioner Hawkins and I were on board with the AMC Legislative Update. And one of the things that they, that Matt talked about is there possibly is some housing money coming to each of the counties. And for, they posted a listing for the 87 counties. Looks like we could be around 232,000 coming to Cook County, based on our population and all, so hopefully. And the way the legislatures are moving through things so fast, hopefully that might even be accomplished by the end of the week. So we'll hear more from AMC on that.
We'll definitely keep our ears open on that one. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. There was more. The first one was I virtually attended the Minnesota Senate Elections Committee hearing on SFF, I think it was 7200, which is the range choice voting bill. And both for local support as well as statewide potential. And that was a new experience for me. I hadn't actually watched a Senate committee hearing and there's a lot of mud. That was unreal and, and frustrating and scary. Yeah, it was, it was, it was, they passed it in committee. I'm not sure where that goes from there, another committee probably, but we'll see if, where that goes on the, on the Senate floor. Also, we had our cannabis committee meeting intending to get that update and see what's going on through AMC. And boy, they're on top of it and they are rooting for local public health, for the, potential impacts on communities and the education and just being able to fund and, and address that ahead of time. There is a lot that is really hinging on the, the formation of this new regulatory committee. And, and a lot of, a lot of the details will be worked out if the bill passes and then when that, that committee is, is formed, or that commission, I guess, is formed. And so, but, yeah, there, there have been some significant strides to support locals, both as far as the zoning of, of operations, whether that be grow operations, manufacture or dispensary. And then also, just on that, the licensing for local governments to have some say in that, much like alcohol and tobacco. Before these amendments, there wasn't any. It was just the state dishing it out, you know? So that was troubling for everyone involved, I felt like. And then, I guess that's, that's the, the three big things, the local public health, the, the zoning and then the enforcement side of things. And there's still lots to be worked out. There's still horses being traded and all that, so it's, it's, it's pretty interesting. And then I did want to publicly apologize. Maybe that's too strong of a word, but just kind of pull back on that, that estimate I gave for our potential bond payments of the, the CIP. I just Googled it and blah, 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 what do I know? And had different percentages for 10-year, 30-year and all that kind of stuff. But it sounded like Brady, or Brady did a little bit more digging and it was almost triple the payments of what I had said publicly. So, I want to, you know, pull back on that and thank you for looking into that. And it could be different numbers and different timing or I, I have no idea, but it would be really helpful when we start talking more about that to see what elders has to say about it, right, the pros, so.
Yeah, I got the, the rate, their estimated rate. But did you get feedback on that?
No.
Were people listening?
Nope. I, I just, just listened to myself, right?
So, and I guess, Madam Chair, if I could.
Sure.
It probably bears mentioning, there has been a lot of conversation about efforts to update our financial management plan and we are trying to schedule a meeting with Bruce Kimmel to, to begin that work.
Yeah.
So, just want you to be aware that's happening.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you. Well, for my updates, I was fortunate to be able to attend the land use training down in Mankato that was provided a couple of weeks ago. There were actually two groups of people from Cook County that attended. One group of three went to Mankato and a group of two went to Staples for that training. And we learned about statutory basis for zoning, limits on land use regulations, a lot of updates on conditional use permits, interim use permits, all really valuable information, both for planning commission members and, and for those of us on the county board, so very, very valuable.
And you made it back alive.
And I made it back. It was, it took a little longer because of a snowstorm, but I guess that happens in Minnesota. Then we also have had our first meeting for the airport master plan. That particular group includes a few members of the Airport Advisory Commission, but in addition to that, Tim Miller from Grand Portage attended, Linda Jurick as part of the group as visit Cook County. It was just nice to have other people with other perspectives and part of it is just talking about what kinds of vision do we have for the airport over the next 20 years? What kinds of aircraft are going to be coming? Because that has to do with the width of our taxiways, the length of the taxiways. So there was input that we were seeking from, you know, the FAA, Men dot Aeronautics was there, Auditor Powers was there. I mean, we just had a lot of different eyes and different perspectives looking at it. But it was a kind of an introductory meeting. We have two more that will be coming up and we'll report back on those. And then, I thought a lot about a couple of the watershed meetings I've attended lately. Lake Superior North, one watershed, one plan. We're doing some reviewing of the work that we've done, both in Cook and Lake County. We work jointly in that organization. But also in the Rainy River, Vermillion River, one watershed, one plan, where Cook and Lake and St. Louis County, the three of us work together. And we were prioritizing issues. We have a draft right now, but we were thinking about impairment and we were looking at the money that you get to allocate to work on impairments. It struck me that in that watershed, we have over 16,000 lakes and the money that we have to work on improvement for that watershed gives us money to work on 18 lakes out of 16,000. And that, those numbers stick in my head when we're thinking about an environmental assessment and thinking about how important it is to protect so that we don't have things going wrong and then not enough money to clean things up. So, it was really interesting that the timing of these watershed meetings came at a time when I was examining things very carefully here in Cook County and certainly caused me a lot of pause. So that is, those are my updates for this point in time. We have some meetings coming up. We have the March 25th meeting at the Hovland Town Hall at 10:00 regarding capital improvement plan. We have our AMC Leadership Conference coming up, March 29th through the 31st. Are there other meetings that commissioners are aware of that we should point out? If not, looking down on our agenda, we are ready to adjourn if there is a motion.
So moved?
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.